Over some instructions before we get going into the meeting on how people can participate. In accordance with the executive order N dash two nine dash two zero. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties. How to listen or watch the planning commission meeting? Listen, listen or watch the live stream of the planning commission meeting in two ways. One, you may access the live stream of the meeting by using the following link. HTTPS colon slash slash zoom. Period US slash J slash nine five zero three six two seven three four eight seven. Password number two zero zero five two five. Yes, Director? I'm showing that I'm not, but.
Nobody else is.
Mute. I apologize if I'm not coming across, they're saying that I may be muted, but I'm showing that I'm not. So. Give us a second, please. Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me out there. Thank you. Welcome, all of you. Director Ford and the IT gentlemen are, are working on things. Joshua. Okay, go ahead. All right. Looks like they got it. So the second way is calling via telephone at three four six two four eight dash seven seven nine nine. Enter meeting ID nine five zero dash three six two seven dash three four eight seven. Password two zero zero five two five. Or while watching on access humble. Public comment instructions during the meeting. Participate in the public comment period of the meeting in the following two ways. Via computer as an attendee. To raise your hand, click the raise hand icon on the bottom of the Zoom window. When you click the raise hand icon, a hand icon will appear next to your name. That will notify the host, your hand is raised. You will also see the hand icon turn green. When you want to lower your hand, you click the hand icon again and your hand will be lowered. When you are called upon to speak, the Zoom platform will ask you for permission to unmute your mic. If you encounter any issues, please use the call in option below. Via phone, call using cellphone or landline. When the planning ends to discuss the agenda item you want to comment on, call into the conference line and turn off your TV or live stream. Please call three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine. Enter meeting ID nine five zero dash three six two seven dash three four eight seven. Password number two zero zero five two five. And press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When you are called upon to speak, you will be prompted to unmute your mic. I'm sorry, that was a lot of information and probably very confusing, but I hope you got it and have the information off the website. So Suzanne, would you please do a call for a Commissioner President would be. We can salute, let's please salute the flag first. Now, would you do a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Bongio?
Here.
Commissioner McAver?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Having modifications for the agenda tonight?
We do not have any modifications to the agenda at this time. There are some supplemental, there is a supplemental for the first item on the agenda.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open public comment for any item that is not on the agenda. So if anybody has any, anything they'd like to talk to the commission about that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. It looks like. Am I not seeing anybody? There's not. I have chat and questions and answers, but I don't see anybody that's putting their hat up. So not seeing anybody do. You guys see anything? Nope. Uh, I'm going to close public comment then.
Good evening, Commissioners, Thomas Mulder here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. First off, I'd like to apologize to any county staff that has received emails from me. My email account was hacked this morning and again this afternoon, so I apologize for any inadvertent emails that went out. But then on actual non-agenda items, I want to, I keep hearing that the ad hoc cannabis committee, subcommittee is meeting about changing personal use cannabis ordinance to 2.0, and I hope whenever they bring a draft ordinance before you, you guys can take a look at that and hopefully, I'm hoping that it'll be somewhere around 200 square feet over an acre, or under an acre parcels and 500 square feet of parcels.
Um, they're asking me to talk into the mic. I think we figured it out. So sorry, everybody. All right. So are we all good? We're back on? All right, now we're going to move into public hearings. And the first item that we have on public hearing is Homestead Collectiv Weed Company LLC Special Permits. And I will take a staff report if there is one.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Megan Ryan and I am the assigned planner for this project. I have a presentation available, but I'm not able to share it right now. So I could just run through that without the slides unless that changes. The project before you this evening is a special permit for 9,000 square feet of outdoor cultivation. There be one harvest annually, a relocation occurred in, in twenty nineteen. Excuse me, and I will explain that a little further in my presentation. The project also includes a special permit for development in the stream side management area to allow for use of a point of diversion and development of an on-stream pond. The project is located on five five seven six Homestead Road near the community of Bloxburg. The project is before the commission this evening because the planning department is recommending that the, the project be denied based on the following, primarily that the applicant has failed to pay the 2018 Measure S taxes. Therefore, the project does not conform with all applicable codes and requirements or standards of the Humboldt County Code and that the, because of information requested by the department that was not received, the general findings were unable to make the general plan findings and, and determine that the project will not impact biological resources. Therefore, the planning department is recommending denial of this project and I will move forward with talking through those items. Failure to pay the Measure S taxes. The interim permit was not extended for 2020 if the applicant did not pay the taxes for 2018. The applicant states the cultivation did not occur after receiving a June 26, 2018 letter from the planning department requiring both local and state authorization to cultivate. Humboldt County Code Section 719 regarding the imposition of tax describes the amount of tax that's required to be paid and also states that regardless of whether or not marijuana is actually grown on the property, the taxes are required to be paid. The CCM L U O, also known as ordinance 1.0, does require that the application also complies with other land use and regulations within the Humboldt County Code and state code such as paying the taxes in this example. As I stated previously, there was unauthorized relocation that occurred on the property in 2018. The initial cultivation area verification found approximately 6,900 square feet of outdoor and also noted that an expansion of an additional 8,000 square feet had occurred. The applicant submitted additional information through their agent to clarify the prehistoric, or I'm sorry, the historic cultivation area and argued that the relocation without authorization is what had occurred, not an expansion. A letter was sent from the department to the applicant requesting $4,000 be paid, which is twice the Measure X tax for outdoor cultivation as it was determined 2,000 square feet of expansion had occurred. The planning department, in your staff report tonight, the, I had included, there's a correspondence with the department and the applicant that has images showing why the department determined cultivation did occur throughout 2018. Their Google Earth images from the summer months of 2018. A settlement agreement occurred with the applicant. See, oh good, I can share now, so. Let's see. So here are the images that were provided from the department to the applicant. You can see from May 2018, the cultivation area is to the left of the pond and also in the subsequent aerial images for June, July and August, the kind of green irrigated area to the left of the pond persists. So here's May, here's June, July and then August. A settlement agreement regarding the expansion occurred between the department and the applicant. The expansion fee was waived as it was determined relocation of pre-existing cultivation occurred, not expansion. An interim permit was issued to the applicant on August 22, 2018. It was valid in 2019. It's important to point out that during this time, the applicant did not contest cultivation occurring during 2018. And as I stated previously, the county code for payment of the taxes for cultivation is required whether you cultivated or not. And finally, the, the, we're unable to make the required findings for the project. And drafting the staff report, there was a course made in November 2019 that asked for additional information based on comments received from the building department. CDFW requested a wetland delineation and there are some clarifications asked for in the operations plan. And the supplemental items your commission received last week, there was some clarification to those operation plan, uh, plan questions. However, the additional items have not been received. Because we do not have those additional items, staff is unable to make the required findings for biological resources, streamside management area, parking and the performance standards for water. And again, the planning department recommendation is to deny the special permits based on the based, because the failure of the, to pay the taxes in 2018, that that is, does not comply with all standards in the Humboldt County Code and that insufficient information was submitted to make general plan findings and determine the project will not impact biological resources. I will note that, that in John said at the beginning, or Director Ford said at the beginning, that there was a supplemental item that was provided this afternoon that you were forwarded. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So any, any questions for staff on this? From the commission at this point. I have one attendee from the audience that would like to chime in, but I haven't opened up public comment yet. Any questions for staff? The commission? So seeing none?
I have one, Alan.
Oh, okay.
Just wanted to ask about the item that we got. It appears to be a letter from the applicant making various sort of allegations of missteps and misinformation provided on our part. And I was just curious if staff were going to add additional information or address any of the assertions made by the applicant.
Would you like to address that or would that be?
You know, I have reviewed the letter that was provided by the applicant. I think Ian and Cliff and I have discussed those items. Specific responses were not prepared to the letter. For example, there are, there's information where the applicant's disputing the invoice, for example. That could be done directly with our department. And so, and I have not been made, you know, until we had that supplemental that was not brought to my attention, there is disputes regarding the invoices that were submitted. So that's one example of items. If there's specific items in the letter you'd like more information about, that would help us.
So I didn't have any specific questions. I just, I guess, wanted to hear you say that none of the allegations or assertions made by the applicant in any way changes your staff recommendation as to the appropriate recommended action.
Yes, that is correct. I think, you know, when it comes to, for example, the invoice, we can deal with that directly at the department. It doesn't change the recommendation to pay the taxes. And none of the information, a lot of the information also that was presented in the letter was also included in the staff report package for this evening. So there was no new information that was provided. But it does not change our recommendation.
Any other questions for staff? Uh, seeing none, I'm going to now open up the public comment. It looks like we have one attendee that would like to speak, so please feel free to address the commission.
Hello, this is Roberts. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah. Yes, I can, we can hear you.
Thank you, Commission, for taking the time to review this application. My main concern is that I keep getting completely different information from county staff and myself and regarding the, the application process. If I applied for 10,000 square feet, I did not apply for 9,000 square feet, but I will go over what I believe was the problem to begin with, which was our cultivation report that was done and the mistake that was done there was three of them. Let me just grab my notes real quick, please. The first thing that we did was I pardon me, I'm sorry about it. Okay, here it is. Can I just read you my thing, which I wrote? You guys, you have my supplemental thing I sent in last two weeks ago. Do you or do you not? I don't think I can hear them.
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay. So. To go over, let me just deal with what Megan said first of all. The relocation took place in 2017. The reason why we relocated was I had the North Coast Regional Water Board come for an inspection prior to anyone in the county looking at my property. And where my cultivation sites, I didn't know you need buffer zones between all your water sources. It's 50 feet, 100 feet and 200 feet depending upon class one, two and three stream. This was never a knowledge of mine until I had the water board come and they told me where my growth sites were and they said you need to move them or we won't give you your water rights. That is why relocation occurred. Measure S tax for 2019 has been paid completely. There's no outstanding bill for that. The reason why 2018 was not paid was basically because my cultivation area was done in March. It was completely wrong. The planner took an hour and a half. She looked at two sites and combined them as one. They also put words that were a little disturbing to me. They called it a gorilla grow. My grow site underneath the tree canopy was done for water conservation, no other reason. I live a pristine life. There are no chemicals, no Clorox, nothing on this property. So I added articles about a gorilla grow because it's extremely disturbing as someone who's never been to my property is asserting that I grow in that style, which is not true. Another one on that is, uh, they didn't forward this cultivation area verification until six months after it was done. Now, the significance of why that's important is during that six months, Director John Ford sent a letter, which is the June 26 letter, which was, it's on the website. It clearly states, if you do not have a permit, you are illegal. I did not have a permit. I applied in December of 2016. We're now at June 2018 and I have never heard one word from Humboldt County Planning. So I'm in the dark of what to do. When I read this letter and says I'm illegal to cultivate, I have to make a decision. Do I cut down my crop or do I illegally continue to grow? I cut down everything except my cover crop. I grow a cover crop because I don't use nutrients. I don't use pesticides. I use all plant-based material. Director Ford said that I didn't state in my application that I grow cover crops. I've let you guys with my CDFA, with my state application. It says directly on there, I think it's page of my supplemental report on page 17 and 18 with CDF. I clearly state I grow with cover crops. On page 30 of my response, I sent Megan an email on 3/26/2019. How do I avoid cultivation tax for the 2019 year in case I do not get a state permit in time? Because the state permits take a while as well. She didn't respond. But in February of 2020, she sent me an email and said, I owe the 2018 cultivation tax because I did not send in a cultivation reduction form. Well, on page 53, John Ford said, we were working with permit holders if they cease to cultivate or if they changed in their status. The problem with that is I didn't have an assigned planner until April 16, 2019, which is clearly almost six more months after we did this. Now, in attachment five, which your staff report, it says there's communication between Greenroad Consulting and the staff. I was never ever aware of this until this staff report was done because on a week earlier, August 13th, I responded to the CAV report because I wasn't going to pay another thousand dollars to my agent to go over a report that the county had made a mistake on. So I replied to the county. I sent in a report when I dropped it off at the counter. I said, do I have an assigned planner? No. So I got it stamped, I got a receipt and it was taken. It wasn't then a week later until the department and my agent discussed the cultivation area. And if you look at my email, I did not sign the contract with my agent because I didn't want him discussing the cultivation area when he had never been to my property. I've had the water people at the property, I've had the agency come, but never to examine my past cultivation. So how could they possibly have a communication with you on that issue? That's just a cultivation area. Now, the 2018 taxes, I, the day it came out in September, I was issued a 30-day permit. I went directly to Bob Russell, who is no attachment to this project, and I said, Bob, I have a 30-day permit. You just gave me a $10,000 tax. I haven't cultivated. You still had four months to come to my property to look at the situation or anything, but he was like, go visit Amy and Michelle at the Humboldt County Tax Department. I went there and they said, we only collect taxes. We don't determine your tax rate. So then I was writing a letter the next day to Bob and within a week, I got one extension, two extensions for the entire 2019. Now, a 30-day temporary permit will not let you cultivate for the entire year. Cultivation takes over a year to do. Germinating seeds is one to two months. Cultivation takes three to five months. Cultivation takes three to five months. Puring and trimming takes three months. So, by the time a permit is issued, you need a full year to grow a cannabis cultivation, not 30 days. So, I explained this, and I was told it's unacceptable. So, from day one, I got the tax. I went down to appeal the situation. And it then started where I thought 2019 was all good, because I was given those extension letters. In 2020, or in 2019 December, Cliff Johnson sends me an email stating, I'm denied 2020 permit because I didn't fit, I failed to pay. I clearly stated that day, I will pay this tax regardless. I just want an appeal and a hearing. I want someone to go over the situation and determine, because no one was able to work with me because I wasn't assigned a planner until 2019. So, I asked for an appeal. There was no chance to appeal. I've gone over all the county documentations on how to appeal. You have to be denied your application in order to appeal it. Once the denial letter came, I immediately sent four letters to the Board of Supervisors. I sent one to John Ford. And I explained my situation. I kept asking for a hearing. It's now six months later, and we're at the hearing today. I can continue, but I would like, if anyone hasn't clarified.
Right. Thank you. Any questions of the applicant from the commission?
I have a question, first of Meg. I was looking at the report, and there's some photographs in there on page, they start on page 11. Is that of this year or last year? I mean, because this is August.
And I'm just pulling that up right now on page 11.
Yeah, it follows the photograph of the individual that was on the site. It says August 13th of this year. Does that mean last year?
Is that in the supplemental?
Yes.
Okay, just a moment, please. Just, sorry, just a second to pull that up. I think that the photographs, I'm looking right now, I think the photographs provided in the supplemental were provided by the applicant.
And my question was, what year were they taken? Because it says, it says on August 13th of this year, but it doesn't say what year. Maybe I'm missing it.
Maybe the applicant can answer this question, so I'm going to let Is the applicant still there?
Yes, I am.
Can you, Ann?
Yes, I can. Those pictures there are just showing you. What I did was I took a picture of our grow site, and I just wanted you to see that it is a flat. There is no grading. There is no tree removal. It is on a flat meadow, open space. It's a 60 feet by 200 feet. And we have walkways. We're building grow boxes and everything, but I wanted to show you how simple our grow operation is and how easy it should have been permitted.
Those aren't the pictures I'm talking about. I'm talking about the pictures of the trash and the propane canisters and the pesticides that were there.
To clarify, that was today's supplemental items?
Oh, those pictures were mistakes, which I went down to talk to building and planning several times. Those are not my grow site. Those are on my attachments to my Excel report, and these are things I've come several times down to the building and planning department. Those three pictures of tree removal, grading, and that big grow area are not mine, but they're attached to my application. There's also planning department forms that are on my site, which are not attached to mine as well. These are the constant mistakes I've gone down to building and planning and asked them to remove, and it's taken several times. They removed one picture of a greenhouse, which was not my greenhouse, because I don't have a greenhouse.
So, there was no one ever arrested on your site by the name of this individual Andreas Montes Dioca? He wasn't arrested on your site either?
I have no idea who that is. I've lived here for six years. The previous owners lived here for 30 years.
So, maybe somebody can answer that.
If I may address this issue, so it's my understanding, I think what Brian and I had talked about previously was that the cultivation area that was initially done by the department did look at cultivation areas that were on the neighboring property, and it was important to him to convey that those were not violations that he had done. And in August of 2018, prior to the interim permit being issued, a cultivation verification report that I believe is included in the staff report was submitted by Green Road Consulting that described the historic cultivation areas that were on the subject parcel, not related to that. And the 9,000 square feet was the number that the staff at the time arrived at, and the interim permit was issued for that 9,000 square feet based on information from the applicant and in the Green Road Consulting report.
I guess I'm just confused, because if he sits here and says he runs a pristine operation, and then I look at a report with these pictures in there that look far from pristine. I'm trying to have a, you know, connect the dots here. He's saying they're not his photographs. I'm not, I don't know if you're saying they are or they aren't.
Commissioner O'Neil, if I could just clarify, this is something that the applicant submitted, they buy supplemental? A person claiming they're not pictures of his property, but I don't and we're not asserting that they are either, so I hope that cleared.
So, just to be clear, Mr. Johnson, this not information that we had in our file relative to this. This is something that applicants submitted. This is not something we were using as our evidence.
That is correct. My, my understanding, and I guess the applicant can clarify this, but I think he's asserting that this is linked somehow on the public portal. But this is not anything that we have in the file, and if that's the case, that's not been brought to our attention or anything. It has not been used by staff for the review of this project at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Or the applicant? I see I have, seeing none, I'm gonna, I see we have one attendee. It may still be the applicant. I can't. Okay, thank you. So, I see no other attendees that would speak on this, so I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Director would like to speak on it.
Could I just maybe clarify a couple of things in terms of an appeal? What the applicant has had asked for is an appeal of the amount of cultivation area that was being taxed for 2018. And it was a rather long discussion about whether or not he cultivated or not. But the way Measure S works right now is that the planning and building department is responsible to report to treasurer and tax collector the cultivation area that a, that a permit holder has. And based on that, the treasurer tax collector collects tax. There are no appeal provisions within the code to allow appeal of a tax assessment, because it's simply based upon the permitted area. The only way to change that is to not have permitted area or to reduce the permitted area or to take away the permit. And since the permit existed in 2018, the, that amount of tax was due.
Thank you, Director. I see we have, I've closed public comments, so I'm not going to open that back up. Oh, sorry about that. So, I'll bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Anybody have anything to say? Not seeing any hands. Do I have a motion from anybody? You say there's a long list. Come on, guys.
I'll go ahead.
Thank you. Yes.
It, it's a difficult decision here. Hearing the testimony tonight of the applicant and looking at this report, it just looks like there was a lot of back and forth and confusion without a planner aside, you know, assigned to this just further adds to the confusion to an applicant that doesn't have anybody to guide that person, the applicant, through the process in a timely manner. I don't know how much was misunderstood or understood about the Measure S tax and why it was not paid. That might be something that could be brought back here from staff to talk about with us here on that, but I don't know that the applicant understood it completely, but not having a planner assigned, I think adds to the confusion on this, and it does to me as well.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'm just wondering if it's possible to go back and if the applicant can discuss this payment that he owes, and if he did, maybe he possibly did not understand that you have to pay a tax whether you cultivate or not, based on an area. If he's willing to comply. If he's not, then we move on, but if, if there is any room for him to make good what he owes and to get in good standing, I would entertain that. If not, I would, you know, just vote to deny it.
The director may have a comment on that.
Would just say that this really is about the non-payment of the tax. I personally have spent probably three hours explaining this. Bob Russell spent at least three hours explaining this. Cliff Johnson has spent at least three hours explaining this to the applicant. I, I don't know how much more clear we can be. I don't know how we can explain it differently. I don't know how we can help this person. I think there's just a fundamental unwillingness to pay the tax that he had a permit for.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to state SEQA guideline section 1527 of projects that are disapproved. Make the finding that the development does not conform with all applicable standards and requirements of the Humboldt County Code and adopt the resolution denying the proposed Home State Wheat Company LLC project.
Okay. I see. Sorry, I see we have a hand up, so we have a motion, though, on the floor. I believe, Noah, you have your hand up?
Yeah, hi. I did put it up, but just before Commissioner O'Neil made that motion, so I, I could maybe just wait to make my point until we have a second.
Maybe you could make a second.
Okay, or I'll just, I mean, I'll go ahead and second it just for the sake of having a discussion.
Okay, and would you like to start that discussion?
Sure. I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of a follow-up to Commissioner O'Neil's question and Director Ford's response. This, this, I have found this one pretty confusing, and to be honest, I didn't really get a chance to digest the supplemental material that came in today. But if I understood what Director Ford last said, it's that really, I mean, I mean, Megan did cite a couple of other findings that couldn't be made, but if I understood what Director Ford just said, it's that really this does come down to the applicant's unwillingness to pay the tax for 2018. And I, I know the public comment is closed, but I guess I was wondering if before we go ahead and vote to deny i- if that's the, the chief grounds on which we're denying, I wonder if we want to put the question back to the applicant as to, you know, if that's really all he has to do to get us to approve this, is he still unwilling to pay that back tax?
Well, I'm reluctant to open up public comment again, but I will, since you asked the question, Noah, and we'll let the applicant answer your question. This will be the one and only time, so.
Hello, Noah.
Go ahead.
Noah, thank you for the question. Yes, in an email dated December, December 12th to Cliff Johnson, I clearly stated, I will pay the tax regardless of fairness. I've been asking for an appeal since the day it was issued back in 2018 in September from Bob Russell. I've never refused not to pay this tax. I've always said I would pay it. I wanted a hearing based on the fact that you were given a letter saying you are illegal if you cultivate, continue to cultivate without a permit, and not having that permit in hand, I had to make the decision, do I become an illegal farm, or do I stay compliant? And I stayed compliant. And that's the reason I wanted to talk about this and have a hearing, because I did the right thing and not the wrong thing, but yet I'm being taxed for the $10,000 because I did the right thing, and I should have continued to grow, but then I would have been in violation, so I didn't. When Director Ford said there's no way to do it, I've been told by two people, if you fill out a cannabis cultivation declaration, you can avoid the tax for the year. So, you need a planner to be able to hear that and tell you that, so you could do it properly. When I appealed with Bob Russell in September 2018, we had four months within the year to come inspect the property, to fill out that form or do anything, but I've never had anyone to talk to at the building and planning until after April 16th, 2019, when I was finally assigned a planner. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant before it comes back to the commission? Mike Newman? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I just have to find my cursor and get the unmute done. To the applicant, question is, is the tax from 2018 was how much? And then there's a penalty of 10,000. Is that what I understand?
No, that isn't, that is incorrect. The tax is $9,000. There is interest now, which I've sent a letter to the Tax Commissioner, John Bartholomew, asking, I've been disputing this since 2018, so I said, after the case is done, if, depending upon the filing, can we at least waive the penalties and interest? I have not heard back from him, but I spoke with Amy yesterday regarding the taxes, and she said, come in on Friday, depending upon what the situation is.
So, the question to you again is, are you willing to pay that tax right now so that this permit can be continued?
I've always been willing to pay this tax. If you look at my emails to the Board of Supervisors and to Director John Ford, I've continually stated that I would. I just want to get a hearing done, because without a planner assigned to me, I had no information to go on except for what's on the public website. And that public website on June 26th, 2018 clearly stated, if I did not have a local authorization and a state authorization, I was illegal. When I got my 30-day permit, I immediately When I got my 30-day permit, I immediately applied for my state application, and that wasn't approved until November of that year.
Okay. Director, do you care to comment on that statement just made?
If he will pay the tax, we would be happy to work with him on this. I would say that even though there may not have been a planner assigned, there were people who were available to help and assist planners. There were many projects that were moved through the system during that period of time without planners assigned. I just take offense to that frankly, and part of the struggle here is we have worked very hard to help people get through the system. And, you know, this is just one of those where we have seemingly been stuck on this point. If Mr. Roberts is willing to pay the tax, I'm willing to go and talk to the treasure tax collector and ask if he would waive the fines and penalties, and we would be happy to work with Mr. Roberts to get this back on track.
That sounds fantastic.
Any other questions for the applicant before we close?
I hear him say that he was, he's glad to pay the tax, but I don't really, that doesn't sound like he's ready to show up to pay the tax right away. He's still talking about wanting to do appeals and, you know, and not feeling like he was treated fairly, so the concept that he's willing to pay the tax to me doesn't sound really very sincere unless I can hear him say, "I'm putting the check in the mail." And I don't hear that coming from him.
Any other comments for the applicant or questions for the applicant? If not, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Can you see?
Yes, I just did. I'm sorry.
Sure, we talked about the fees, but I also understood there to be a wetland delineation that has not been received to address some of the comments from our partner agency, and I just was wondering if we were to somehow try to allow him to work with us on the fees, how we would get past not having that wetland delineation?
Through the chief. There are still some, there is still some work to be done on this application. So basically, what we would do is work with the applicant to understand specifically what needs to be done, help him to define that, and then get those, the relevant studies done, address the issues that are still outstanding, and then we would bring it back for planning commission consideration.
Thank you, Director. So I haven't closed public comments, so the applicant has his hand up, and I'm going to let him have one more comment, and then we are going to close it. So the applicant can speak.
Thank you very much. Regarding the wetland delineation, I had, can you hear me? I had Department of Fish and Wildlife came and inspected the property on 1/15/2019. I had Humboldt County come inspect the property on 5/15/19. On my pre-site investigation form, Director, or I don't know if he's Director, I'm sorry, Dean Beck, I believe is his name, he notes, "No wet areas are within 200 feet of the cannabis cultivation." The form you sent for my referrals was done on 4/16 as well, after the state had asked you guys for information regarding mine. So the CDF, the Fish and Wildlife, had already come to my house and already done inspection during the wet season, and there's no, there's no wetlands within 200 feet of my thing. If you still need it, which I told Meghan back in the day, I had to assign for December 12th a biologist to come, but again, I've had CDF and your own planner come and check the wetlands, and there was no information. Regarding parking, there's plenty of parking. All the other information has been addressed prior to this. Thank you. And the payment
Go ahead.
Taxes.
Go ahead.
The payment of the taxes to address the other commissioner's concern is, I've talked to Amy and Michelle at the tax collector, and I have an appointment to go with them tomorrow in case this does not go my way, but I've always said I'd pay the taxes. The problem with the taxes is you're taxing me on cultivation area that wasn't cultivated because of that letter sent by John Ford on June 26. So a 30-day permit was the entitlement to cultivate all year. I signed it under duress because without signing it, you cannot get a state permit.
Okay, I'm seeing the panelists has their hand up. I don't know who it is. Noah, go ahead. Who it is?
Okay, I guess it's more of a procedural question. There is a, there's a motion to deny that has been made and seconded. But based on the back and forth we've just had, I mean, I tend to agree with what Commissioner Newman was saying that, you know, that I'd prefer to allow the applicant one more chance to reconcile with the planning staff, and that does, as I understand it, require payment of the tax, but Director Ford just said that he would personally appeal to the tax collector to waive the fees and fines, or the interest and so forth. The applicant has made a a case about the sort of unfairness of that tax, but but as I understand it, it's a little bit outside of our land use jurisdiction to weigh in one way or the other on that, and and if the process doesn't allow for an appeal other than whatever you can personally appeal to the tax collector, then I don't, you know, I'm not inclined to make any change to that or suggest that we should. But what I guess, to come back to my real question, it's a procedural point. I think what we're, what we're talking about now is a need to continue this. So to allow him to pay that tax, which then I think would allow the planning department to change its recommendation to deny. So that's what, assuming if a majority of us wanted to do that, is that what we would need to do is not vote to deny, but rather move to continue? That's really what my question comes down to.
I'll let the director answer that, but remember, we have a motion. I don't believe there's a second on it.
There is a second on it.
Yeah, Noah seconded.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm sorry. I apologize, Noah.
So there's two ways to go about this. One is the motion could be withdrawn. I think this could be withdrawn. Or you could vote on it and see what happens, and then if the motion failed, you could cast a new motion.
Okay, but just to be clear, once we deny, if we do deny this, it's done, correct? I mean, the permit is, the application is dead?
Well, it's denied by the planning commission, and still is appeal right on the permit to the Board of Supervisors.
Got it. Okay.
So with that, I'm going to close the public comment that we reopened. So this is back to the commission. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion on that?
Hearing Just want to make sure that the motion is to deny at this point. So if you vote no, that means we're not going to deny, and we're going to continue the discussion.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay.
That is how I understand it as well, so we have, so hearing no more discussion, I'm going to ask for the vote. So Suzanne, would you do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Mitchell?
What'd you say?
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Levy?
No.
Commissioner Newman?
No.
Commissioner Banjo?
Yes.
Commissioner McDavid?
No.
And Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Oh. Okay, O'Neill, I'm sorry.
I said yes.
Okay, thank you.
The noes have it, so it appears that
The motion failed. Now what is needed is a new motion. And I sense that the appropriate motion would be to continue this to a date uncertain.
So we have a motion to do what's expected to happen, just moves this to a date uncertain.
And I just want to say one thing, that if it comes back to us and he still hasn't paid his taxes, I'm not, it won't change my position.
Yeah, I'll move that we continue this to a date uncertain in order to give the applicant one last chance to pay the tax and rectify any other inadequacies of the application.
Noah, second now.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
I have a comment on this, Brian. I just wanted to ask the director if he felt it would be appropriate if we put sort of a soft deadline on this, and that if this hasn't happened by a certain amount of time, that you bring it back to us for a denial, whether you've heard from him or not. Would that be appropriate? And if so, what timeline do you think is fair?
I think that's completely within the discretion of the planning commission. And I would say that at least three months would be needed. Four months would be better to allow this to go through the course that it needs to go through.
Would, would making that
So bring it back on or before September 15th.
Would you be willing to modify the motion?
Yes, I would. I would so modify my motion to continue it to a date uncertain, but no later than September 15th.
And I agree to that as the second.
So when we have a motion and a second, I see no more discussion unless you put your hand back up, Noah, but I don't believe so. So I will ask Suzanne for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Mitchell? Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Banjo?
Yes.
Commissioner McDavid?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, looking at the time, it's about 7:30. Does everybody want to take a little break? We'll take a, say a five-minute break, and then we'll get back to it, and we'll take on our big item for the night, accessory dwelling units. So we'll see you in just a few minutes. Oh, jeez. Oh, jeez. The next item on the agenda is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Take a staff report, please.
Good evening, everyone, commissioners. My name's Mary Miller with Planning. Michael Richardson and I will be presenting the accessory dwelling unit ordinance tonight. What we'd like to do is ask you to recommend that the board adopt our drafts of this ordinance. What our goal is to highlight the, the major parts of the ordinance, the purpose of it, and the various things that we've incorporated through public comment. So, I've got a presentation that I would like to share.
Please go ahead.
Quick overview first. This should take maybe ten minutes. We'll look a little bit at the history, just because it's been a long time coming. What's in the draft? I'd like to go through the draft a little bit upfront and define some, some of the components, so that it'll be easier to discuss. Then I'll just briefly run over the workshop and public comments, which are attached onto the staff report in more detail. Finally, there's a couple of local initiatives that we've done quite a bit of work on, tiny houses and movable tiny houses. Michael Richardson is going to present a little bit of that, as well as some building code amendments that we're incorporating. Finally, after that little summary, we should probably go through and look at the ordinance, starting with the inland, and do kind of a walk-through of the various parts of it. And the way I would like to do that is to do it by sections. And I'll, I have an outline here that we'll get to in a second. So, first, the purpose of the draft ordinance was to respond to 2017 and 2019 legislation. What we try to do is stick very closely to the, to the legislation with our provisions. There are a few areas where we get to have some discretion. And the discretionary items we've used to try to implement our, our 2019 housing element, because ADUs are a good mechanism for creating lower-cost housing. We're trying to use this ordinance to kind of boost our capacity to create that by incorporating tiny houses and making some building code changes. Finally, one of the things we've tried to do is take our workshop ideas and our public comments and use those to sort of shape the ordinance to fit Humboldt County particularly. Hopefully, we've done that, and if we have, we'll, you'll let us know. Brief history of the ordinance. It's long history, nineteen eighty-nine. It started with a fairly restricted use and compatibility with the neighborhood was required. And the use was restricted more or less to residential zones. And through time, the second unit ordinance has expanded, and the trend has been from less, more restrictive to less restrictive and more widely permitted. Till you get to twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, where ADUs are now principally permitted, wherever a single-family residence or multifamily residences are allowed. So, kind of an outline of, of the drafts would be useful, I think, just as a setup for the discussion. There's a, traditionally, secondary dwelling units was the name for these things. We've adopted the name accessory dwelling units because that's the state name. That the, that's what it's called in the state legislation, and it's kind of an update. We're sort of remodeling things. So, along with that, we're, that also comes along with a change in numbering in our code. It goes from eighty-seven point one, which will be repealed if this proposed ordinance is drafted. And that'll be moved to sixty-nine point oh-five. So, you'll notice the drafts now are labeled with sixty-nine point zero-five accessory dwelling unit. As we go through the PDFs, you'll notice that some areas are highlighted in blue. And the reason I did that was so that we could tell what provisions were mandated by state, by the new state laws. So, everything in black is kind of our framework for things. Everything in blue is a provision that state law specifically is dictating. We also have a coastal draft. That is actually still in progress, but we can, it mirrors almost identically the inland. So, it's kind of, we probably don't really need to go through the, the thing in detail. Although I do, we can talk about the differences between the inland and the coastal. And if there's any questions, we can do that. I'm going to skip this one for now, and use it as a prop when we get to the actual walkthrough, if that's all right with you guys. For definitions, there were a couple of things that I think will make it at least a little easier to understand and get through. Many of you are totally familiar with this, but this is more for people who are just, maybe not as familiar. So, I just wanted to point out that, yes.
I'm not seeing your shared screen. Is, is, does anyone see a shared Mary's PowerPoint presentation?
Really?
I thought she was just going over the overview.
All right, that was my, that was my snafu. Can you see it now?
Yeah, yeah, if you were to push, if you push F-five, the F-five key, it'll start the slideshow.
That, is that, now can you see it?
Yep.
No way, you let me get all the way through that far and didn't, didn't tell me that you couldn't see my screen? Okay, cool. Is there anything you want to go back over? Anything that, okay, I can zip through again real quick.
Yeah.
Hey, hello, everyone. Overview of the presentation, history and purpose. Stop me if you have a question. What's in the draft, role of workshops? This is just our outline. And so, at the end of my ten, which will probably be more like thirteen minutes, discussion of the ordinance and walkthrough. And that'll be, I've got the PDFs that we can just throw up and go through. So, the purpose of the draft. We talked about that. The history of, this would probably be very confusing. This was the slide of history of secondary dwelling units. By the way, this presentation is also on, on our website, if anybody really wanted to read this stuff. So, let's start with what's in the draft. Secondary dwelling units are now accessory dwelling units. And we've moved from eighty-seven point one to, of the code to sixty-nine point oh-five. This is kind of important. The, the glaring blue sections are going to be, that we'll talk about are going to be the state provisions. So, this is the slide I said I would like to actually wait. I think I dropped this in the wrong place. I would like to talk about this when we get further into it. It's kind of a prop. So, if you'll excuse that and ignore that one. I wanted to bring up a couple of definitions. Accessory dwelling units are, as everybody knows, hopefully, that they are not the same as a definition of movable house and tiny house. The reason I bring this up is because people often think that when they look at the definition of a tiny house, that they think they're looking at the accessory dwelling unit provisions, but they're actually two different things. We define the tiny house and movable separately. And then, as a building type, and then accessory dwelling unit is the rules that apply when you use those two building types as accessory dwelling units. So, just to show the difference, an ADU shares a lot with proposed or existing dwelling. It's allowed with only a building permit if you meet all the requirements, twelve-hundred-foot size limit. And tiny houses and movable tiny houses are separately defined in the code. You'll talk about the definitions in a bit. They can be ADUs, but they don't have to be. And the reason we did that is because at some point, we may want to use movables and tiny houses elsewhere that are not as ADUs. There's a four-square-foot size limit, and there are some other criteria. So, one other quick definition. That's the difference between ADUs and junior ADUs. So, ADUs have relaxed zoning and building restrictions. Twelve-hundred-square-foot size limit can be attached or detached. Separate bathroom, did, did you want to say something, Michael? Oh. Um, and then junior ADUs, for, by comparison, have even more relaxed restrictions. There's a five-hundred-foot squares, five-hundred-square-foot size limit. They must be within the space of a proposed or existing single-family dwelling, and there's no separate bathroom we required. So, when we talk about those two terms, those are, that's what they mean. So, the reason that this is, section has gotten a lot of attention is because there are certain residential zones and mixed-use zones where it's possible to have both a JADU and an AGU on the same lot. And that's addressed in sixty-nine oh-five, three-point-eight. So, we'll talk about that also. We did a lot of workshops, as I, we've been doing those since last fall, and got a lot of good comments and input. I prefer not to go over them in detail, but especially since they're kind of summer, actually, they're laid out in full at the, in the staff report. But I just wanted to acknowledge that a lot of our ideas that we got are incorporated in our ordinance, our draft ordinances. We also received input from our referral agencies. That was very helpful. Things about water and sewer, areas outside service districts, the adoption of appendix queue. All those things came from suggestions and discussions with agency personnel. Finally, local ordinance initiatives. That's some of the larger discussion points, I think, that we'll get to. That would be there are tiny homes and movable tiny homes, and a couple of building code changes that we're proposing. Michael will talk about those. And then, the areas where local jurisdictions have discretion are specifically stated in the statute. One of those areas is public health and safety protection, sixty-nine oh-five point six. So, we can look at that. And this is just showing you, actually, it's, this slide pretty much tells where we have discretion. One is to do anything that makes the ADUs, that's more permissive, anything more permissive than the statute is allowed. And then, anything that goes into the particulars of public health and safety. And that's a gratuitous tiny house picture, showing that not only Humboldt County has them. And at this point, we were going to go back, kind of trade back and forth between me and Michael. He's got some areas to cover, including our late-breaking public comments, some discussion on that. And also, a little more on our building code and tiny house initiatives. Do you want to take a crack at it, Michael?
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll just point to you to move through the AOB slide.
Okay.
When I'm ready. The, the, the changes that we're making to the alternative owner-builder requirements are specifically to allow ADUs to be built by an owner of a property and then to be occupied by somebody other than the owner of the property. Our AOB, our alternative owner-builder regulations are really helpful for a lot of people in rural areas of the county because they relax a lot of the building standards, recognizing that, you know, in these areas that aren't so developed with public water and sewer, that we can take a more relaxed approach to allowing buildings or homes to be constructed out of, for instance, wood that's milled from trees that are on the property. Some of these homes don't have electricity, and so, building code requirements to, that require outlets every eight feet would not necessarily be applicable. And, and so, there's just a variety of ways that these alternative owner-builder regulations support the, the rural builders of the county in allowing a more relaxed set of standards. And then, the permit, the, the paperwork that's required of AOB permits is dramatically reduced. It's, it's far easier to submit a, a plan under the AOB ordinance than it is to submit under the regular building codes. And then, the, the fees are dramatically reduced, and you don't have to have constant inspections after you're done with the insulation, after you're done with the electrical, all that. It's just an inspection at the beginning and an inspection at the end. And they're really just trying to key in on health and safety considerations. And, and the way our, our ordinance right now is set up is, not only does it need to be built by the owner of the property, but it, it can only be occupied by the owner of the property or their family members. And, and of course, this would present a problem if you want to allow ADUs to be owner-built and, under the AOB regulations, because you can't obviously be occupying both houses at the same time. And so, what's being proposed is we delete the requirement that the AOB units be occupied by the owner-builder. And then, we specifically include in the AOB ordinance the term ADUs, just to kind of, it's a belt and, belt and suspenders sort of an approach. And then, another factor is the AOB regulations right now. I'm sorry, did-
Michael, yeah, is there a different slide than this one that's showing right now? Or, or are we still on this?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just describing it.
Okay, thanks.
And, and so, the last, Mary shared her screen. And, and then, the last of the major changes to the AOB regulations is to replace the limit of one unit can be constructed by that a person in any five-year period. If you're building a home and a second unit on your property, an ADU on your property, you should be able to do that within a five-year period. And so, it seems, it seems unnecessarily constraining to limit a person to construct one of these alternative owner-builders. Building units to once every five years. And, and you know, during the workshops, we, we asked. What the group thought was an appropriate timeframe. Obviously, you don't want proliferation of. AOB units by, you know, some wildcat group of builders out there. And so the, the feedback that we got was one unit per two years. Would be sufficient. It's probably going to take them two years to finish a unit anyways, so. That seemed to be appropriate. And so that's what we're proposing. And then the, the tiny homes, if you could advance the slide there, Mary. The tiny homes ordinance is. To, actually, this is something that's kind of a moving target. State law is becoming increasingly. Friendly towards tiny homes. And so our ordinance is trying to not only keep up with. With this new allowance, but bring it forward as an allowance in our ADU regulations. And, and so here what we're talking about is allowing reduced ceiling height. So you can go down to. Six, six foot eight inches for, as a ceiling height. You can use ladders to access your loft. And it, and your loft is actually can be used for sleeping and, and they recognize it as living space now. And so those are the big changes that are being proposed as part of the. The tiny house building code amendments. And you'll see those, the, the AOB changes are in attachment four of the staff report. And then these tiny home changes are in attachment five. One, one thing is we, we did include a supplemental. And that has some changes to the ordinance that Mary is going to go through. During our walkthrough of the ordinance, it, it just is kind of a tweak to better align with the language. Of state law. And so we'll, we'll get to that. But another thing, in an ideal situation, I would have. Provided you with the supplemental with three public comments that we got from. From a couple of folks. And so I just wanted to quickly run down those for you. One was DeeDee Wigan. On April thirtieth. Is suggesting that the allowance. Right now, the, the limit on ADUs is twelve hundred square feet. That comes directly out of the state law. And. Her comment is, is that that's too restrictive and we should allow through a special permit. A, an expansion. And I asked, well, what's, how big do you want to go? And, and. I made the point that we're not trying to incentivize. Large second homes. We got plenty of big homes in the county. What we're trying to do is to. Increase the housing stock of, of smaller homes because those tend to be more affordable. And, and she recognized that. And so her comment was, we should allow with a special permit and ADU to. Go up to seventeen hundred square feet. She thought that that was an appropriate size for. A, a family with a couple of kids. And the special permit requirement, make sure. That it, it's noticed to all of the neighboring properties. There's findings that need to be made. And so as part of that, we could, for instance, make a requirement that this unit. Not be rented as a vacation rental. And, and that was another issue or another topic that came up in this second comment. From Kevin Dreyer. He, he wondered what the intersection is between. This ADU ordinance and our vacation rental allowance. And the fact is, is that. There is very little intersection. We, we stayed clear of trying to. Restrict the use of these ADUs to non transient. Uses not, so, so. Somebody could get a permit to build an ADU as principally permitted use. Really incentivized with these ordinance changes. And, and then they could turn around and use it as a vacation rental. That there's nothing in our proposed ordinance that would limit that. Other, other jurisdictions do that. But the feedback, that, that feedback that we got from the, the public workshops. Was that that would be. Too restrictive and complicated. And the, the burden on the county to track the use of these units over time. It, it just seemed like it was walking down kind of a slippery slope. And so. That, that's the answer to Kevin Dreyer's question about how the AOB or the ADU ordinance. Intersects with vacation rentals. It, it, it doesn't. It stays clear. It doesn't really speak to them at all. The one exception is. The JADUs, and this is coming straight out of state law. JADUs have to be owner occupied. And so you can't.
Actually.
Or the, the house that's the JADU is within needs to be owner occupied. Is that right, Mary?
Let me just add one thing to that. We don't address it, but remember that the state actually limited rentals less than thirty days. So. Yeah, that was, I think it was a twenty nineteen change that they said nothing less than thirty days.
Okay. But we don't have that in our ordinance, that prohibition, right?
Yeah, I think we do because it's state, it's state mandated.
Okay, well, good.
I mean, that's as far as we went with it. There are ways to get around it, I'm sure, but I guess we'll have to address those later.
Okay, good. Thanks for correcting me on that. And the, another comment that Kevin Dreyer had was the mobile home. Section in the ADU ordinance. It, it requires that the mobile home be less than ten years old. It requires that the roof be at least six inches. Have an eve of at least six inches. And there's a couple of other things. And, and the reason we. Included those in the ADU ordinance is because that's what it says. Is applicable to manufactured homes in another part of the code. And so that's a discretionary thing. We don't need to replicate that in. In this code, we can take out the section and, and, or take out all of the wording. And just refer to this other section. And, and frankly, that other section is old and. And somewhat discriminatory from my perspective. Manufactured homes are. Increased in qual, have increased in quality over time. And it'd be hard to. To really see it, the difference between some of these manufactured homes that are being produced now and a stick built home. And so. That's, that's one of these future housing element tasks that we want to take on. But. For your purpose for tonight, we are going to suggest, and when Mary gets there, she'll flag this for you. That the mobile home section of the ordinance should be reduced to just. Refer to the appropriate section, other section of the zoning ordinance to. Rather than regurgitating all of that same verbiage. And, and that'll make it easier when we do modify in the future. Those manufactured home provisions, we won't need to go back and, you know. Have this cleanup work to do. And then. The, the other comment that we got was from, was from Thomas Mulder. And that came in just this morning. And, and he made the argument that, you know. ADUs are really intended to be affordable housing. He likes the twelve hundred foot limit. And doesn't think that they should be allowed to go bigger than that. And so that's, that's something for your planning commission to consider. I'm going to touch on one other thing, which is the SEQA exemption. State law includes specifically a, an exemption that says if, if you're. Modifying your ordinance to update it to current state law with regard to second units. You don't have to do any environmental review of those ordinance changes. And the question is, is well, we've got these local initiatives that we're proposing. How do those fit in with that state exemption? And the, the, the fact is, is that they don't fit in well. And so. One of the, our recommendations is going to be that we also cite the common sense. Exemption from SEQA when we're making the findings to approve these changes or to recommend approval. By the board. That we add to the SEQA finding this common sense exemption. And, and the things that I would point to are. With the owner built ordinance changes, what we're doing is we're. Allowing a unit to be occupied by something, someone other than the owner. And it's hard to conceive of. An environmental impact that's associated with that. You're, you're just changing the person that's. Able to occupy that space. And, and similarly, changing how many permits a, a person can get in a year. Or, you know, changing it from once every five years to once every two years. There's, there's really no environmental impact that. I can imagine associated with that change. And so we think that the. That this common sense exemption, one five, section one five zero six one of SEQA is applicable there. And I think, I think that's all I needed to go through. Can you think of anything else I was supposed to talk about, Mary? You're muted. There you go.
Yeah. No, that covers it. And each point you made, I'll point to that when we get into the ordinance. So we can actually look at the, the wording and people can have opinions about, about that.
Yeah, great. I think we're ready.
Okay, I'm gonna first pull up, share the last slide that I somehow misplaced during the original presentation. Oh, let's see, where am I? Whoops.
You, you had it there.
How about now? You got it?
Yeah.
All right. So this is just. No. I'll get there eventually. Sorry, I gotta look for it.
There you go.
I don't know how I missed this the first time.
There it is.
No, that's not it. What the heck? Second, hang on a second. I'm gonna try to. Sorry about the snafu. Okay, this is the one I want. Let's see if we can get to it.
One, one comment I'll make while Mary's pulling that up is we've been working with some folks that are. Planning construction of ADUs and, and our, our AD, our second unit ordinance was. Blown out of the water by state law, which says, if you don't have a ordinance that meets all of the requirements of state law. It's null and void. And so that, that happened in twenty seventeen. We've been operating under the state rules since then. And Mary and I have been engaging with people, helping them understand what all of the requirements are. And it's been an educational. Journey for both us and the applicant because these rules are really complicated. You know, hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to explain them in a way that, you know, breaks it down for you to make it easily understandable. But there's some terms here that are, are new. You know, like for instance, we have this JADU. Or an incident, and Mary will get to this, or JADU section of the ordinance that says. JADU needs to be within the, within the space of, in. Existing or proposed. Home. And the, the, the person that we were engaging with. Had a plot plan that showed this JADU with a, a wall separating. The JADU from the eighty or from the primary residence. And our first reaction was, well, it's not within the enclosed space. And so it doesn't meet the requirements, but they came back with the, I think. Brilliant analysis that said, what do you mean? It's not a, a part of the enclosed space? Yeah, it's got a wall separating the JADU from the primary unit. But from the outside, it's going to have the same sighting. There's gonna, it's going to be continuous sighting. Along all of the walls, the roof line, there's a continuous roof line. The roof doesn't change over the ADU. And so from the outside. This new construction is going to look, have the appearance that the JADU is within. The primary unit and, and. And so, you know, these are the things that we'll be wrestling with as we interpret the code up at the front counter. With these folks that are, you know, trying to build their dreams. So take it away, Mary.
All right. So what, I just pointed to a few sections of the code that we can take a look at. And I was going to use this as kind of a roadmap as we go through. And let me, at this point, get to the code. Itself. Hopefully we're there. Everybody see that? Okay, this is the inland draft. So as I said in the introduction, you'll notice there's some parts highlighted in blue. These are the things that. Come right out of the statute. And the highlighting in this kind of tan color are just things I wanted to point to for your discussion. And possibly, you know, if you want to make changes or make decisions on these things, I tried to pick out the most obvious things that. Have been generating a lot of interest in questions. So let's just go through section by section. Purpose and findings. The big one is the point dictated right out of the statute is that. At least one accessory dwelling unit per lot is allowed now by right without. at least one accessory dwelling unit per lot is allowed now by right without anything but a building permit in any, any area where single family or multifamily residential use is allowed. And the word is, wording is very specific so that it's, it doesn't say anything zoned for single family use. It says anything where single family or multifamily residential use is allowed. So that's really broad. And another thing that, that kind of covers as a general rule, ADUs do not, are deemed as not exceeding allowable density for the lot that they're on. And at this point, I think you guys can interrupt me at any point for discussion or comments or questions or whatever. So I'm just gonna, if with that, I'll just kind of point out the main points. The first one is that ADs may be excluded or may require a special permit in certain designated areas as described in 69056. Basically, that is the health and safety issues that we were talking about. And we can go into what those are in more detail. But this is an area, the reason it's highlighted is this is an area where we, where localities are asked basically to apply their local conditions and allow or disallow on, on the conditions in their particular jurisdictions. So general things that apply to all ADUs. This is a kind of a general outline of the rules. Basically, one ADU per lot is allowed under the state law. And that would be a lot. Yeah.
Sorry to step in, but I think we've got some questions.
Yeah.
Unmute when you're in screen share right now.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. Yeah.
No, I can unmute when you're in screen share.
You just go to your. I couldn't unmute Alan and Alan couldn't unmute, so.
Okay, go ahead. We'll, we'll take your questions as just without the code, unfortunately. Would be nice to be able to look in there, but. So what's the first question?
Mary.
Pardon?
You can have the code up there and we.
Okay.
I was able to.
So you want me to share it then?
I'd rather see the code in front of me.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mary. Yep.
Let's try it again. And then go ahead and ask your question.
I didn't have a question. I'm sorry. I was just had done before, when you were starting here. I was trying to ask Alan if we can make comments or questions during the course of this. And, and then you answered that. So that's fine.
Okay, just go ahead and jump in if you have anything. Should I proceed? You're. Okay. So we were on general provisions, one ADU per lot. So we have made in our code actually an exception for AE lots that are greater than 40 acres in size. And this mirrors the old code. There's the same provision in the old code. On a big lot, you can have a second residence of unrestricted size. So we just carried that over into the ADU. And I guess that's a point of discussion of whether we want to do that.
Mary, this week, in my supplemental here, it says meeting, meeting of May 7. In 69.0531 says, except for AE lot, 60 acres or larger in size. But you're showing 40 on.
Right. Yeah, that's a difference. That's a difference between the inland and coastal. I think it's 40 acres on the inland and the, the limit is 60 acres in the coastal version.
Well, I'm in the wrong section, huh?
Possibly. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Michael, but I think that's the, I think that's what it is.
What, what page is it?
On the staff report?
Yeah, they're the report on the, yeah, this is from the May 7 staff report.
Do you have a staff report up, Michael? I can get it if I need to. I think.
I'm looking in attachment three is what.
Oh, yeah. Attachment two is the one. Attachment two towards the beginning is where we are.
So I was in the wrong section.
They look a lot alike. And the numbers are the same.
Yeah. Okay. Got it. I see now. Thank you.
Sure. And then the other thing to note in that same paragraph, configurations with more than one ADU are allowed in residential and mixed use zones as described in this next section. And it's kind of a, that's the special case I was talking about where you can have a junior ADU and an ADU both on the same lot. So just kind of to review what probably everybody already knows, ADUs can't be sold separately except for movable tiny houses when you move them off the lot. Here's the thing I was telling you about, Michael. This is actually out of the statute, the ADU may shall not be rented for periods of 30 days or less. 690534.
Okay, good. Thanks. Thanks for that.
Sure. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Alan, and thank you, Mary and Michael. This is Noah. I, I just wanted to, before we get too far beyond a point you made on a few moments ago, Mary, about how while state law essentially requires us to principally permit second residences on anywhere that, that a primary residence is allowed, it does, it allows us, it allows local jurisdictions to make exceptions where there is deemed to be a threat to public health or safety. Is that, is that correct? Did I understand?
Yes, that is correct.
I guess, yeah. Well, I mean, I, I'm, and if I'm jumping ahead to something you're gonna cover, then you can just tell me that. But, but I'm, I'm wondering if, if you're, if the proposal does make exclusions along those lines and on those grounds. And in particular, what concerns me is, I mean, I'm, I'm a huge fan in general of what this ordinance is trying to do. I'm a huge fan of making cheaper, smaller, more affordable ADUs easier to do in, in all places where we have services and municipal water and sewer and basically developed areas. I, I do have some concerns though about easing those restrictions and incentivizing that in rural areas, particularly due to the, the dual concerns of water supply in certain watersheds and subwatersheds and fire risk in, well, kind of everywhere in, in our more rural parts of the county, especially the southern county. So I'm wondering if those factors, those concerns were taken into account. And more generally, if there was any restriction on where these ADUs can be employed or, you know, it sounds like you're saying everywhere that, that a residence would be permitted. We, this would, this would be in effect. So that's, that's the end of my question. It's a bit formless, but I, I wonder if that's something that you guys took into account in your crafting of this.
Actually, we did. And you're right, it is down further in section 6905.6. That's where things kind of old unfold into what is appropriate for Humboldt County. These are kind of just the general things that apply to ADUs. But where our discretion kicks in is in those lower sections where we have to go into.
Sure. And so I'll let you get to those then. Thank you very much for just answering that. Yeah.
Sure. So, um, also, our original thought was, and maybe we still have this thought, Michael can tell you, but was to actually have, you know, have the areas mapped that had these. We're calling it the special permit area. In fact, if you look down the page here a little bit, at the ADU special permit area, that would be the areas where those hazards that you're talking about apply. And of course, it's, then it's a matter of either trying to define or map them. And that's what we're heading towards in section 69056.
Yeah, I, I didn't get there for this meeting. I'll hopefully have it for the next week.
Yeah, it may be a moving target also because it's gonna have to be constantly updated, right? I, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure we can get permit level accuracy with a map, or maybe we can. I don't know.
Yeah, the way I'm conceiving it is we should be able to.
Awesome. Okay. So hopefully the, the goal there would be to make it simpler and easier where people, people could just look up and see what kind of things they were facing. Look at a map and see, give, get a yes or no, or maybe. So there's, here's a couple of kind of general, I don't know if I should read all of the state mandates. I'll try to just pick the ones that are kind of pertinent and perhaps shocking. I don't see anything there. Okay, okay, we went past the 40 acres. Short-term lodging is prohibited. The building type, it lists the types of buildings, attached, detached, over a garage, community accessory building. And here's one of our local initiatives. I probably should outline that. An ADU may also be a tiny house as defined in section 155 or a movable tiny house as defined in 148. And we can actually, actually look at those definitions. Notably, the state has also said a manufactured home can be an ADU.
Here for a moment?
Yeah, go ahead. This is the mobile home thing.
Okay, I, I wanted to just go back up to that section where it talked about vacation rentals, short-term lodging. So, so this language is coming straight out of state law. And it says, can't use it for rental periods of less than 30 days. The question is, is how, how does this become actionable? And other jurisdictions have gone into more detail about how they're going to ensure that this mandate is understood and is enforced. And so if, if we wanted to do more than declare state law here, this would be the section that we would want to characterize those changes in.
Question on that. Where I can put my hand up inside there, so.
I, I had a, I have a question, but I can wait.
You're real fuzzy, Alan. Your voice.
Okay, thanks, Helen. I might be jumping ahead because we were seemingly doing that. But I was wondering why you have in there that a certificate of occupancy can't be issued for the ADU before the primary dwelling has the certificate of occupancy. In those cases where a property owner is building both a primary residence and an ADU at the, the same time or a time frame, it would seem to me that it would be beneficial to have the certificate of occupancy for the ADU because then the property owner could live in it while they build the main house, which is a fairly common, you know, perhaps not always entirely legal occurrence anyway. So I'm just curious as to why you, you have that in there that, that, that should not take place. Thanks.
I can answer that. That is actually another thing right out of state, the state statute. It's because it's in the color of blue. So I think though, that if we were to replace that with something less restrictive, I think we're allowed to do that. A local jurisdiction can, you know, go beyond what the statute is allowing, I, I believe. What do you think, Michael?
Yeah, I think that's true. I think the intent here is to ensure that accessory dwelling units are accessory to a primary unit. And if you've got, if you issue a certificate of occupancy for an ADU, there's no guarantee that, that the person is going to follow up and build the primary unit. I'm not sure that that's the logic that the legislatures had when they enacted this, but that's as close as I could get to trying to infuse some logic into that requirement.
The chair'd like to ask a question to follow up since we're at this section now. It's a question I wrote down earlier when you were going through. But on the type of building, my concern is that you said mobile homes could be built in these areas. And I don't have any problem with mobile homes. But is, is the county gonna be taking over the responsibility for doing inspections on mobile homes? Because the way it is now, the mobile homes are done under a totally different set of building codes and standards that are, are enforced by state inspectors, not by county building officials. So is, is now the county gonna be taking that responsibility over? Or if you do a, a, a mobile home, are you gonna still be working with the state?
So as I understand it, all those state rules still apply and HUD is still the agency that would be, you know, enforcing. So it doesn't really change anything. Basically, they have to follow all the state rules as well as the county rules for ADUs. That's the way I understand it. Does that sound right, Michael?
Yeah, that's right. In, in our section that, when, when we get to the mobile home section, the, the code that was the origin of this spells out in more detail the fact that a manufactured home is defined as this. And it's tied back to the HCD certification of, of the mobile homes.
Yeah, I think it's 81.113 of the Humboldt County code goes into manufactured rules, which still would apply.
Thank you. Thank you for your response. My follow-up question would be, given that we have the set permit period anyway, and there would be a clear benefit to a property owner. I, well, I just don't see why we would put that clause in there. I, especially since we're probably moving towards allowing tiny homes or smaller homes on a lot anyway. It just seems kind of a natural thing to, to build that first and then live in it and then build the other one. And there is a, you know, if they don't, then there's a, the permits would expire. There's something could be put in there to that effect, I assume.
Yeah, well, we could either modify that or just delete it. I mean, that would be an option. I don't know. How would we handle suggested changes? Maybe make a note and we'll come back with.
Yeah, right. I, I think that's the way we, we proceed is we will take notes of all of these suggestions that you have and we'll bring back alternatives.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I have a question.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Two, um, when you were talking about the, um, expansion of sixty-nine point oh five three point four, which is about the ADU not permitted for, not permitted to be rented for periods of thirty days or less, and we wanted to add anything in there? Or just leave it at that? If it's left like this with just the thirty days or less, does that mean that, um, it'll be completely just complaint-driven? Um, or is there another way of modifying that where it's over, overseen in some form or fashion? I don't know what it could be.
It's, uh, the state doesn't give us any help there, but this, to me, this would be the perfect place to have an, a companion ordinance for vacation rentals that would cover that ground. But at, at the moment, we're going to be in that ozone where there's no rule. So in other words, you could even, either address it in this section or in the separate ordinance for vacation rentals.
Yeah, they, where, where you have to get a special permit, we can add conditions of approval that would, you know, ultimately, we could be fairly heavy-handed and require some sort of a deed restriction, um, be placed on the property that would notify everybody that, um, that you can't rent it out as a vacation rental. But for principally permitted, uh, ADUs, which is, that's, that's what is being encouraged here is most of these ADUs are going to be principally permitted. Then you're, you're limited to what we can do with a building permit application. And, and as close as we get to, uh, restricting uses, uh, through the building permit processes, we've got these notices of restrictions that, that we work up sometimes, uh, and require the owner sign it, and then that becomes a, a part of the building permit. And, uh, in the end, it's, it's not enforced by the county until we get a complaint. So it's all going to be complaint-driven unless, um, unless we're told to do otherwise.
Hey, Michael, Mary?
Yeah.
This is John. Uh, we have some, uh, public, I think, that would like to get some input. Are we at a place soon that we could take a break and, and allow some public input?
You know, we, we are intending to do as slow a walk as through this as the commission wants. And so we can break for public comment whenever it's the, the commission feels it's appropriate.
My second question that I wanted to find out about that we're looking right here on this page with the manufactured homes. This means that manufactured homes could be set onto a space, but they have to be ten years or newer. And then when does that expire?
It, it would be at the time that the building is permitted. It would have to be constructed within the previous ten years.
Right, you move a mobile home on there and then it stays there forever? Is that it?
Yeah, it can stay there forever.
So those tend to deteriorate, uh, more.
Well, there's, there's nothing in our current code that has any limitations on the, the use of a, of a manufactured home.
Okay, and, and this is state mandated as well?
The state says you have to allow manufactured homes to be used as ADUs. We, we are, we're going a little bit beyond state law by including these, you know, cutting and pasting from the manufactured home section of, uh, of the county code. And that, that's the only change that, uh, we've got in here and, and we're rethinking that. We think that's probably not a good idea.
I understand that. I, I'm just saying there is no way around putting any other definition, um, or restriction about manufactured homes being used as ADUs that are, ADUs at this point are up to twelve hundred square feet. Is that correct?
Yep.
So that's pretty sizable, um, onto a, a lot if, and going up to twelve hundred square feet, can that be right at the, um, lot line and all of that? What restricts anything there or not? As long as it fits on the property owner's land, um, you can go up to twelve hundred square feet. Is that right?
There are the set, there are some setbacks and those two are dictated by, by state law, I think. Let's see, where's our setbacks? It's down here further. But I think, I believe it's four feet or as, uh, the other thing that's considered there is fire safety. As long as it's not a safety hazard, they, there may be bigger required setbacks.
You put them in your front yard?
It's not, yeah, the four-foot allowance is for either a side yard or a rear yard, not the front yard.
Could you put one in your front yard? If you had a big front yard?
Yeah, there's no, um, there's no requirement that the ADU be behind a, uh, primary unit.
So if you, these units are, are to help with overcrowding and, you know, lower, more affordable units, but what, what's prevent them from not becoming overcrowded? Four hundred, six hundred square foot units where, you know, a family of five or six people live in it, is there any rules against occupancy?
We don't have any, any, uh, restrictions on occupancy of a house. The, the ordinance does talk about, uh, a single-family home shall be considered, um, six unrelated persons or fewer. But you can have a, uh, as many related people as you want living in a house.
And the other thing is if you move one of these into a neighborhood and say everybody has like a paved driveway and you move one in and you put in gravel or, you know, drainage that it doesn't exist, and then that starts to impact your neighborhood or detract from your neighborhood, is there anything in there to make it have to fit into the neighborhood and not become, I mean, we all have this kind of romanticized view of what a little tiny house is. I'm, I'm seeing a lot of them and I support them. In fact, I'm going to be writing a grant for, for some this week, but I could also see that it could be, you know, um, pretty ugly if there's no standards that it has to fit into the, um, community. Or, you know, the resident, the street, you know, the neighborhood. But is there anything to that?
Yeah, the, um, movable tiny homes, uh, section of our ADU ordinance is not a requirement of state law. That could be deleted if that's the preference of the commission.
The tiny houses that, you know, that are movable are actually not, you know, the issue, I think it's more if all of a sudden I decide to build a six hundred square foot house, you know, for my neighbor, well, my neighbor is building one right now, an ADU, but, um, they build something, let's say, that doesn't fit in the neighborhood or cause it, it doesn't have a paved driveway, doesn't fit in to, um, you know, the, the style or the standards of, of the street. And I'm not saying that one is, I'm just saying, is there anything in there that would require that? Architectural requirements, paving of driveways, um, proper drainage, all of that, um, not blocking people's view. Say I got a really nice view and all of a sudden they stick it right in front of my window and, you know, all it's going to do is create a lot of, um, tension in the neighborhood because not everybody's responsible in the way they, they construct things. But everybody's going to want the extra, you know, rent or extra space. I understand the whole importance of, you know, having affordable housing, but not at the expense of, you know, um, people's peace of mind and, you know, their, their. I just think it needs to be a little bit more thought and I don't want like someone building a, you know, I didn't really like the one in Peru so much and all of a sudden if it popped up in front of my window that I look at every day, um, would move.
Well, th- those are important concerns. Um, as far as the driveway goes, this is a comment that actually Bob Bronckel floated past, uh, John Ford and I just before the meeting, uh, last, the last meeting we had, it, which is, uh, he, he thinks, and I apologize for not bringing this forward, Bob, forgot about it. Um, he, he thought it would be a good idea if, if the, um, home is served by a paved public road, then we should require that the driveway accessing the, the ADU also be paved. And, and so that's, uh, when, when we come back to you with some alternative language, we'll, we'll bring those forward. Uh, we'll bring that language forward. As far as the compatibility with the neighborhood, um, finding goes, the state is really taking a heavy hand in precluding, uh, local jurisdictions from not allowing homes. They are, they want homes to be constructed and one of the things that's gotten in the way of home construction in the past has been these kind of nebulous, vague, non-objective standards that local ordinances contain that the local governments are able to use to deny, um, building permits, deny conditional use permits. And the state has had enough of that. They're, and so they have occupied that section of our ordinance to say that if, if you are going to apply standards related to, uh, some local condition, those standards need to be objective. And, uh, and so a, a finding in the ordinance that says all, uh, all ADUs need to be compatible with the neighborhood is not going to fly with them and.
I didn't mean to be that, that general. I'm just saying, you know, if you live out in the, on a forty-acre parcel, maybe a gravel driveway is suitable, but if you're living in the city, it's not. And so, you know, there's certain, I, I, I'm not saying you have to have, you know, these perfect houses, but there needs to be some consideration for the rest of the community because there's a lot of people that will just cram another one here, cram another one there just for a rental for extra income and, and they're not going to really care, you know, what it looks like necessarily or what, what their neighbors care about, you know, and then pretty soon you're wanting to move to a different state.
Well, I would encourage the commission, if they're inclined to add performance standards, to make them objective. And that's, that's how you're going to maximize their, um, likelihood of success.
I can add something about the, the, the wording of the statute. It basically lays out a bunch of, um, provisions on, you know, things that can be limited. And then it makes a blanket statement that denying a permit on any other basis than what is in this statute is not allowable. So it really limits our, it limits our creative mind as far as denials goes. They have actually laid out the, the areas that we do have discretion are in anything that has to do with public safety, safety, traffic impacts. But aesthetics is basically, you know, intentionally left out of that list.
I'm thinking of things like runoff, you know, like if, tho- those types of nuisances that you might create that, you know, is anybody looking out for that? Whether there's proper drainage or they're all of a sudden going to be, you know, there's another roof and it's draining, um, onto your lot and now you've got flooding issues that you didn't have before. I mean, there, there, those types of things. Are those considerations that are objective?
Yes.
And I don't want to, I don't want to get hung up and not have other people have their time to, to talk is just, you know, one of the issues that I've had.
Let's, Melanie's had her hand up for a while. Let's let her ask a question, then let's let the, the, uh, sta- um, staff keep going so that we can get to, we want to get some public comment and we're going to do that shortly. So let's try and get through as much of this and then we'll let the public speak.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, well, uh, as far as the, the size of the ADUs go and the appearance, what the city of Portland did was have the smaller ones, uh, be, you can have them look however you want. And most of the tiny homes fall in that category and that's five hundred square feet or less. And then if they're between five hundred and twelve hundred, uh, they have to look like the, the primary residence or fit the, the neighborhood. And that, I understand we might not be able to do that because of, um, state rules and guidelines, but there, I'm just curious as to whether you could look into, uh, the possibility of having a carrot instead of saying, okay, well, you want to build, you know, a larger one especially. Here's what the permit process or the fees might look like if it, you know, doesn't fit the character of the, the neighborhood. And here's what it might look like if you matched it to look like the, the rest of the neighborhood or your primary residence. And again, that would be more important for the ones that are larger because as the city of Portland pointed out, smaller ones by their small nature tend to not stand out so much to begin with. So I'm wondering for the larger ones, maybe you could look into that, um, the carrot approach rather than prohibitive. Thanks.
All right. So do we want to do any more on the mobile homes or?
Let's keep going and then we'll open it up to public here shortly.
All right. Um, so tiny houses and movable how tiny houses as ADUs. Basically, this is just declaring that, um, we're defining them and allowing them. And the details of this are in a lower, in a section down below. The one thing it does say that has to meet all applicable building and development standards. So not only does your tiny home have to meet whatever definition, whatever definitional elements we are, but if you want to use it as an ADU, it has to meet the development standards, just like any other, uh, building. Water and sewer service, uh, basically required to be hooked up if it's in, within an urban service area. Rec- required to meet health, a county health department standards if it is not, which would mean septic or some approved system.
So does it, I have a question there. Does it have to have its own separate connection and you pay a separate connection fee?
Um, the fees for separate and separate connections are another state mandated item. Um, down below in a, a separate section under, I believe, uh, it's an, under development regulation standards and codes. There's a section that goes into great detail on where fees are allowed. So that's coming up. So this section tells where basically you can have them. So where one single-family dwelling unit exists on a lot, this provision allows you to build a larger second unit and call it the primary if your, um, existing unit is, fits into the ADU range. And here's the dreaded, um, junior ADU section that's caused a lot of confusion and all kinds of flurry. I'm not, you may have to help me out on this as I was explaining it, Michael. But basically. But basically, uh, we are in a special set of rules for residential and mixed use zones. And this, I've almost taken this verbatim out of the statute. You'll notice there's a lot of blue here. That doesn't make it any easier to decipher. So the rule is one ADU per lot with a proposed or existing single family dwelling. If all the following apply. So this is the condition where, um, you would have two, basically two ADUs. One attached and one detached. And of course there's a great incentive and people really like this idea. So we've had a lot of public input and discussion and scenarios on this. And this is also where we put our supplemental in, right? Because we felt, found a hole in the, i- it wasn't explained very well in our first draft, so we made a few fixes here. So feel free to jump in anytime, but I'll, I'll try to explain this as best I can. In order to have an ADU and a JDU on a lot, the junior ADU has to fit the definition of a J junior ADU, which is given below. Which means it has to be five hundred square feet or less and totally within the existing space of uh, within the proposed or existing dwelling space. In other words, you could build an ADU and a JDU at the same time. As long as the JAD was less than five hundred square feet and entirely enclosed in the footprint. And then there's a few restrictions on the, on the detached ADU that would go with that. So if you can picture a, a primary with a junior ADU in it and a detached ADU all on one lot. So the detached ADU has also a size limit. Which I think, do I see it in there?
I thought it was eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, it's cut in two sections here. I think it's, um, a sixteen foot height limit and eight hundred square feet. So there are some, you know, ins and outs to this rule, but basically this little section allows you to have two accessory dwelling units if one is attached and small.
All right. Melanie has her hand up and then we're going to open it up for some public comment.
Okay.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Oh, I think my hand was up from the last time and just didn't get, um, put down, but I did have another quick question. Um, I'm assuming or presuming from what you've said that, um, all of this is in addition to whatever the property owner currently has, whether they already have one or not.
You mean, if you already have an ADU, you could build another one? I don't, I don't, that's not my understanding. It's one per, per lot. Is that right, Michael? I mean, I haven't run into that.
Yeah, one ADU per lot. And if you want to carve out a space in your house, you can have a junior ADU as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So that is in, only in residential or mixed use zones and only in this one, under these conditions are you allowed to have two. And if you have a house with a, with an ADU already that you're done unless you want to build inside your existing residence.
Right, okay.
Go ahead, Mike.
Along that line, the junior ADU. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that you're saying it has to be within the, the current home, the single family home or the duplex, I guess. Um, but it takes away some of that square footage and becomes a JADU of five hundred square feet or less. And it does not need to have a bathroom in it. Is that correct for the JADU?
That is correct.
They just, it's just kind of a separate living area. But it, it, does it have to have a kitchen or not?
We should probably go to the definition. Uh, let's see.
Yeah, it has to have a kitchen.
But not a bathroom.
But not a bathroom. And, and the kitchen can be just an area for cooking. So it's, it's a really limited.
So it doesn't have to have a sink or any running water?
Well, that, that's a great question. We'll have to take a look at the definition of a JDU.
I defined it somewhere in here. So I think it's way up at the top.
Is that a JDU or is that an ADU? If you add on above your garage, is that an ADU?
If it is within, entirely within the footprint of the existing building.
But you add on, so you make it.
Oh, I, actually, there's a special rule for add-on. If you are, uh, for a JDU, and it can be in a proposed s- primary dwelling, but if it's in a, an accessory building like a garage, it has to be an existing accessory building. That's another one of the things we ran into. The way, it's hard to untangle the wording here. Let me see if I can find it. Within the proposed space of a single family dwelling or within the existing space of an ex, of a single family dwelling or accessory structure. In other words, the only way you can get it in an accessory structure is if it's in one that exists already. Does that make sense?
So that would work for a garage, right?
As long as you're within the existing space. Yeah. You can take your garage and put a JDU in there, but you can't add on. Right, you can't add on.
You, but you can't increase up on top.
No, no, because, and it says not existing footprint, but it, the statute reads existing space. So that would be the three dimensional, no, no height increase.
All right. So, so it's just back to my, my question about running water basically in there in the JADU. If that's not required, um, it's just, you're just supposed to use, um, running water since there's no bathroom requirement in the main single family home.
I think it's just not required. It, there's nothing to prevent you from putting a bathroom in there. It's just not a requirement. It logically, you would probably do that if it was in your house, but not if it was in an accessory building. I, I mean, just logically, but it, that part is not really well defined. And I don't know if we need to.
Well, I'm just, I'm thinking the only reason that you would probably not put anything in there is if you've got a family member moving in there.
Right, right, exactly.
Bathroom and kitchen.
Sure.
Okay, so we've, we've taken quite a bit of time on this and the, the, the public's been very patient. We have a couple of people that have been wanting to ask questions that I see. So we're going to open this up for public comment. And, uh, take that now and then we'll come back. So I'll take the first public commenter. I don't.
We had a comment that, um, the screen share, um, was somehow getting in the way of making a public comment. I saw that on, on the chat.
Really? Okay, let's remove that.
Yeah, for the last thirty minutes, there's not any way for us to actually comment or ask questions.
Please turn your volume up, whoever's speaking right now.
I'm sure that would help. My name's Mark Delaney. Can anyone hear me?
Sort of now, yeah.
Okay, so for the last thirty minutes, uh, there's just been like documents on the screen. Let's see who's commenting. Can't make any comments, can't do any chat.
Speak louder if you can.
Oh, I can't.
Yeah, I can't hear him either, unfortunately.
Hey, Mark, you may need to turn up your gain.
Okay, turn my mic down. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right. So for the last thirty minutes, no one can comment or anything. Like the screen has been blocked by a bunch of documents. Can't see the person. Can't really comment, can't use the chat, a bunch of things. I'm trying to send in the chat, some comments and stuff like that. It's just a tech thing. You've got to be aware of that stuff, but you know, it's really unfortunate, but, um, the comments, there's a bunch of comments in there. I don't know, as they went along, people were commenting, but I'm not going to comment. I'm going to send a letter. So I'll talk to you all tomorrow. I'll send a letter and, and I'll meet with John if I can tomorrow. That's great. It's unfortunate. That's just how it is, but I appreciate all the guys are doing. And we want to get this, I have two major comments. I don't know what the status is of this, but we want the least restrictions possible on that ADUs and the JADUs. And I think that's what you're all trying to do. There's just a few other little adjustments and stuff, but three hundred and twenty square foot for the ADUs would be nice. Appreciate that. And, uh, I'll put the rest of the stuff in a letter because it's too complicated. Uh, it'd be good if we can get this stuff working because we're going to have to be doing this for a long time. I appreciate all your work. It is really good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, the second speaker is, uh, Debbie Glasper.
You know, I just was wondering what the, um, minimum size of the ADU is and if you guys are going to try to make some changes. I know that in California, they've got, um, you can make them very, very small.
Are we?
Through the chair, I, I can respond to that now.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, um, the, the building code was recently modified to eliminate any minimum, um, size for single family homes. And so what you're left with is, uh, a bedroom has to be at least seventy square feet. A bath and a living unit includes not only a bedroom, but also a bathroom and a kitchen. And the bathroom needs to be separated from the, uh, kitchen and the, um, bedroom. And, um, and so it ends up being really pretty small. Probably you could go down to a hundred and twenty square feet and meet, um, all of the building code requirements. That's, that's not specified in the ordinance, but if you were to take all of the building code requirements and, and Alan, please, uh, jump, jump in here if I'm saying anything that, uh, is out of line, but my understanding is, uh, if you put all the building code requirements together, you could probably come up with a design that would be about a hundred and twenty square feet and have it meet all of those building codes.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Debbie. Uh, the next is, uh, Public Twenty.
Hello, this is Thomas Mulder. Can you hear me?
Hi, Thomas.
Hi, hi. So I just, I, I've actually been following this ADU thing through the workshops and I've sat through like three of your guys' planning commission meetings, uh, to be able to speak on it. First off, I will confirm that email that I did send Michael, that really was from me. I do honestly support the twelve hundred square feet. If the intent of this policy is to go towards more affordable housing at twelve hundred square feet, I think you can have a decent modest home. If you're going to rent it out, it's not, the rent isn't going to be too exacerbate, exacerbated. Whereas if you're looking at more like a seventeen hundred square foot home, three bedroom, something like that. A lot of people, especially in Southern Humboldt, we could use more one and two bedroom houses or ADUs. I think it would go towards more of the affordable housing. Um, the one thing I want to point out is I'm very supportive of ADUs, especially in TPZ parcels where residents are principally permitted right now. I know there's some people that are highly against that. I will say I've followed this. I want to protect my children's rights to be able to build a second home on the properties we own. And, um, I think future generations need to have that right if it's something that's principally permitted. So please keep that in mind as you guys work through this process. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Uh, next caller would be Public Twenty Twenty Eight. So I, I believe that's all the public that have their hands up and want to speak. If there's anybody, here's your opportunity, but if not, we're going to bring it back to the commission and close public. So hearing none or seeing none, I'm going to close this portion of public comment and bring it back to the commission and we'll continue and staff to continue the presentation.
So do we want to go back to share screen? Yeah. And just do public comment later? Okay. So I think we've kind of covered this section about the general rules. This is actually, we've gone a little bit into this with capacity fees, impact fees, connection fees. Um, this whole section goes into the detail that, that is in the, the state statute. And a lot of these, um, parameters are just basically right out of state law, everything in blue. So I don't know if I should go through those. We don't really get to make any decisions about these unless it's to make less restrictions. Make it even easier. What's your thought? Anybody?
Yeah, I think, I think the important thing here is, uh, and we, we received some comments from the services district, uh, about this. They're, they're concerned about, uh, these allowances for ADUs, uh, and the prohibition of the CSDs from being able to charge capacity fees, uh, for those new developments. Uh, that's in the, in, previously, that's how they've, uh, funded uh, improvements to their system without having to charge the existing customers and uh, and so we're taking away, the state is taking away a revenue stream for CSDs by limiting the, the connection fees to these ADUs. And, and so it's just kind of a collision of interests here. Uh, the state pushing for more affordable units and, uh, the CSDs having to readdress, having to adjust to a new, uh, revenue paradigm to fund their services.
So one thing that, one thing that did come out was that, um, it's, the rule is different whether it's a an attached or a detached ADU. So that there, the new capacity fees and connection fees are prohibited for an attached ADU. But you can still charge them for a detached, but the charge has to be proportional to the water usage of, of these, uh, ADU unit in comparison with the, the primary. So it's, you know, not, it's not a complete loss of fees. It's just, uh, basically cranking down and refinement.
So Michael and Mary, just on this one, what are the options where the CSD So Michael and Mary, just on this one, what are the options where the CSDs are already at capacity?
The, we've, we've got specific language in here for CSDs that are under moratoriums. Where they are not obligated to provide new services to ADUs in those districts. But unless the services district has gone through the process of establishing a moratorium on new connections, they they're subject to these rules, just like any other CSD.
Well, but one of the things I was really trying to get at is that is this a situation where we may need to impose moratoriums on ADUs? If the CSD can't serve the area, we have a public health and safety problem.
Yeah, that's true. We receive comments from the West Haven Community Services District. Right now, they have no ability to provide new services to new development. And in fact, they've got a waiting list of people of existing homes where the the existing water sources failed. And they're trying, they've been trying for years to get new service from the CSD. And the CSD has not been able to provide that. And and so they would not have to be, they would not be obligated to provide service to ADUs. In, as written in this ordinance, we we could go further than than that and and be more specific about other, you know, capacity limitations that we would want to anticipate, you know, creating problems for CSDs that.
Don't we already do that in section sixty nine oh five point six? That's one of the criteria whereby we would be able to deny an ADU is that if there was inadequate water and sewer, right? I believe that's one of the points in that.
Is that that special permit area?
Yes. Yeah, the special permit area. In other words, if there was not sewer capacity, it's a no go either under that special permit or there's other parts of this code that say one of the requirements is that there's adequate water and sewer. So if there's not, then it's also a no go.
Yeah, so it's kind of a backwards or backing into a denial.
Right.
And so there's a couple of ways that the ordinance treats it. We've got a outright explicit statement that CSDs are that are under moratoriums, not obligated to provide services to ADUs. And then we've got this other section that talks about this, it's a special permit area. And if if a district informs us that they don't have capacity, then that would be one of those special permit areas. And an ADU that's proposed within that area, mapped area would be required to get a special permit, not just a building permit, but also a special permit, which is discretionary, could be denied. And, you know, there's some equity issues there is about even allowing them to apply in those situations. Why would we take in the fees and go through all this permit review where the project is going to be denied? I'm not sure that this ordinance, the way it's written, really addresses it in that detail.
Can I just mention something there? I, the state of California put those requirements in for the CSUs or the Community Service District CSDs. Excuse me, to make it affordable as much as possible without all these extra fees. And I think that by me is acceptable because it it's a smaller one unless we, unless there's some way in that state if there's certain sizes, because you know, a twelve hundred square foot ADU is pretty large. Whereas five hundred square feet is just another bedroom or two being added to that property. And yeah, no fee should be added for that. I I'm in agreement. And I see you were kind of pointing out the sixty nine point oh five four point one point five saying districts under moratorium or compliance orders, you know, you cannot allow them to be built because of the service district problems there. Without going into that other special permit section here. Is there any way of, on the size there, I I don't see anything in sixty nine point oh five four one four about sizes and connection fees? So is it acceptable all the way up to twelve hundred square feet for no connection fee?
Well, the, if you remember, the no connection fee is related to inside an existing structure, the the attached. So what you're saying is if you had a primary and a twelve hundred foot attached ADU?
Well, you said JADUs are attached, right, within? If it's attached, like going up on a big garage or a big barn?
So you're thinking a, well, remember a JDU is five hundred square foot limit.
Right, I know that.
Although, but you could conceivably have a barn with a twelve hundred square foot attached ADU. Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm getting at. Yeah.
Um, so let's see, connection and capacity fees. Of course, we haven't considered that. In sixty nine oh five four one two, a local agency, special district or water corporation shall not impose any impact upon the development of an ADU less than seven hundred fifty square feet. We're talking about, we're talking about water and sewer though, right? Acid charges. They they don't break it out by size with the the prohibition on connection fees that I can remember. Do you think, Michael? I I don't remember seeing that in there.
I don't remember that at all.
There's no distinction.
Well, it does say, Marion, that that you just said on the impact fees, but no connection fees whatsoever. Is that correct?
Um, well.
This is Alan. I'm going to chime in because this has been a big topic of discussion at Humboldt Community Service District where I also sit on the board. And when it comes to the fees, we did a lot of research on it. We can't charge for capacity, but we can charge connection fees for the units that are built. Okay, so if the new secondary structure is built and they want a separate meter, there's going to be a fee that goes along with getting that second meter. Now, if that, if that was built within the the structure that's already existing or the primary structure, and there won't be any charge for the extra capacity that's being taken up. It's really a, it's really a bad deal what the state did here because it's putting small districts in a really bad position. It it, I'm all for these kind of structures, but to to do this, what the the bottom line is, all the rest of us are going to be paying for this because that's the only way that it can be subsidized. So call it whatever you want. It's it's social. That's where I see it.
Well, on that line, on that line, if that ADU is built and you don't add a different line coming in, I don't have the terminology. The the meter, it goes through the main residence. I don't see that there's any difference that much just to add a bathroom and running water in the kitchen.
Be the same effect as having half dozen kids.
Yeah, exactly. So is there any provision that in there, is that what it's talking about with connection and capacity fees versus impact fees? I don't know the difference between those two exactly. Can you explain?
I may defer to the chair on that one.
Well, you can't charge anything for capacity. You can charge for connection fees. So if you're asking for a second meter to water, say you have, you're going to make a rental out of this and you want a second meter, so you it's separately metered, so you can, they can pay their own bill. Then there's going to be a charge for that. You're going to pay for that connection. If it's in that house, then no.
So what, what? So what you're saying, I I, you said within that house. I'm just talking about not making another connection to the street. No extra meter, just that you're using that meter and then you could rent out that accessory dwelling unit and just add another fee for the extra charge that you may get for water and sewer without having a separate meter.
You as the homeowner can do that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you can do that, but you're, the district can't charge you anymore for the capacity you're taking up in their lines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just on, what's the difference between an impact fee and a connection or capacity fee?
As I understand it, which isn't very well, the impact fee has to do with other services besides sewer. Does that sound right?
Yeah, that that's right. Fire service, libraries.
Schools.
Schools, right.
Well, an impact fee could be for anything. An impact fee could be for sewer. I mean, say that there's no capacity left at the the regional treatment plant and we need to to increase the capacity, we need to expand it. So there could be a new fund, you know, developed to do that. So there could be an impact fee. It could be for roads. It could, I mean, it could be for anything, parks.
Park, yeah, that often times it's for parks, trails.
Okay, but in this, the state of California says if it's less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, you cannot do that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it'd be for the larger size units, ADUs. Okay.
Right.
I've had my answers. Thank you.
Noah has a question. He's been having.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is a point which I'll just, I'll be very explicit, was raised to me shortly before our last meeting by Supervisor Wilson. And he, I believe, then subsequently spoke to Director Ford about it. So perhaps I, perhaps when I try to express this question, Director Ford can respond. But he said to me that as he understands state law and and specifically the the sequoia exemption that we would be getting this through without doing environmental impact, that that there's a requirement in the relevant state laws that all ADUs must be built in compliance with building codes and that that doesn't square with some aspects of our AOB provisions. And and that, you know, that the, again, I'm I'm relying on those who understand the intersection between our our local codes and the state laws better than I do. But he did want me to bring that up, and I believe he brought this up with Director Ford. And he got the impression that that an adjustment would be made to to address that inconsistency. So that's really, that's the point I wanted to make here.
Yeah.
Commissioner Luddy, and and that is the nature of the discussion that I had with Supervisor Wilson. And that is something that Mr. Richardson and Ms. Miller and I will be looking at and making sure that we are consistent with state law on that point.
I have a follow up question for that for the director. With with this new law that the the state has put out to create these type of dwelling units, have they reduced their requirements on their end for in any of the areas? I mean, I made a list earlier in the, and was kind of waiting until we got there, but the the subject came up. So I mean, state responsibility areas, have they re, have they taken down any of the things that they've been requiring? If you fall in an SRA area, have they, have they changed? If you're doing an AOB, have they changed Title twenty four and energy code? And are they going to enforce the the new solar mandate on houses? I mean, these are all things that nobody wants, they they mandate them, they throw them on top of of the project, but they don't want to talk about them. So the question is, are they, to to get this extra housing, are they dropping any of the things that they keep layering on us about every year?
So you know all too well, the impact and the cost of Title twenty four implementation, the cost of putting solar on on roofs. And there are state requirements that add to the cost of construction, no doubt about it. The short answer is no, they they're not waiving those. I think one of the things that this ordinance does struggle with and the commission will want to struggle with is how to deal with state responsibility areas where we're putting potentially homes in areas where there is a high risk of of wildfire. And in this particular case, we're calling those out as areas requiring a special permit. Is that regulatory enough, given the fact that many of those areas require improvements to the road to provide fire access for an accessory dwelling unit? And and so there is a real tension there.
Yeah, I I think this is just more of we we want, we want, we want, but we're not going to do anything from the state side. I I think the county is doing a good job of trying to do it, but it's going to be the state that that really puts the brakes on this. Because this is going to happen, this is an infill project. This isn't going to be out in the the areas where you really could get some numbers and some inexpensive houses built if you went the AOB route. And we're going to end up just seeing the people's garages get converted here in town. And then we're going to be having the discussion about there's no parking and and this will probably change again. So I'll stop at that.
If I can add something there. I think those are all good points and probably really true. We we found early on that if we, you know, even with all the relaxed rules, if we applied all of the state standards, it would, the allowed areas would be, like you say, just a few spots here and there around urban areas. I think what we're trying to do, where we can address that is in six, in sixty nine oh five point six, where we have a special permit area, that's where the rubber meets the road on where the, and of course, there's no guidance on that. That's going to be us to decide that that's where the local jurisdictions have to take up the slack, I guess. And I guess that's where I was anticipating we would, you know, be spending some discussion time, and I'm sure we will. And I guess that's where I was anticipating we would, you know, be spending some discussion time and I'm sure we will.
But to follow up on that, we have no, the county can't supersede anything that the state says. So they've already set the bar. All we're doing is trying to come up with ways to uh, I don't know, make, make it a little bit easier, but I, I just, the things that, that add up in, in the house is all the things that the state dumps on us. This, you know, the solar now, that uh, all the energy calks and the, the new requirements that have come with that, fire sprinklers. I mean, those are all great things, but uh, you want affordable housing, you have to get rid of those things. You have to, to gut the house of all the expensive things and those are the expensive things. So it's, if you want to have the real discussion, we have to figure out how we're going to circumvent the state or get the state to, to, to uh, eliminate those things.
Well, can I just add one thing that's maybe a little more positive from our experience with the, our referral agencies? We found that when we start, you know, having discussions like with DEH and uh, find out what the requirements are and what the limitations are and what our situation actually is, we've had pretty good luck. I think, you know, they're very positive about trying to work with us to, what, what, would you say that's true, Michael? The agencies that we have worked with so far have been really.
Yeah, I think that, that it, it's not really penetrating deep enough uh, into the things that Alan's bringing up. The, the one exception is with fire sprinklers. Uh, if, if the main home doesn't have a uh, fire sprinkler system requirement, then the, the new ADU likewise does not have to have a new, ha- ha- have to have a fire sprinkler uh, in it, but um, so the solar requirements all apply and everything else that leads to the expensive uh, housing construction costs, um, all of that is going to apply as well. Our approach here is to, with the allowance of tiny homes and movable tiny homes to uh, reduce the construction costs through reducing the size of the unit.
Okay, well, I just looked up at the clock, Director, and we're getting really close. Um, I think we should probably wrap this up because you had a, it looked like you wanted to talk about something else on the.
I don't think I'm going to talk about anything else tonight.
Okay.
But what I think would be wise to do is continue this to June fourth. So we can uh, finish with the initial review and come back with some of the information that we've promised to provide you in terms of alternative language.
Would somebody like to make a motion to continue this to June fourth as the director asks?
I'll make the motion.
So I, I heard us so moved and then I heard Mr. Newman say he would make the motion. So who was the first one?
Uh, it was Brian.
Okay, so Brian's the motion and, and Mike, would you like to be the second on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Uh, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Banjo?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabre? Okay. And then Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. And with that, seeing nothing else, uh, we will call an end to this meeting. Thank you, everybody, for being patient and sorry for the technical difficulties and we'll see you on June fourth. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.